This meeting is being recorded. Okay, seven o'clock appointment with Diane Peterson, the assessor, to update us on the solar pilot progress.
So I just wanted to come in and just let you know that we have exchanged some spreadsheets. We have not reached any decision as of yet, but we're making progress. And also, the attorney that's handling the pilot agreement actually attended the DOR legal workshop with me last Thursday, and we are making some great progress in that.
Is that the Coulterman?
Yes, Rick Holland.
How's he? How is he?
Fabulous to work with.
Good, good.
And he's got a lot of changes in there, updates, questioned a bunch of the law stuff that we were there. We sat with Ken Gurg from, the attorney from Westboro. They, they're the ones who just had that ATB case with their solar slightly different, but anyways. So we're making progress, and I hope to have some draft, a draft to the board tomorrow up through Mary for you to at least be looking at. Because there's a lot of modifications in it, but we're going to try to.
Will it be marked or will it just be a clean draft?
Right now, it's all marked up of what's been taken out and what EDY White just gave.
Is it a word doc?
Yeah. It's like, that's good for you.
Yeah.
I'm assuming you want to see what, you know, they came up with and where we're at, so.
So everybody now agrees that the warrant article that's on there is worded correctly?
Yes, yes it is. And so we made a minor modification. Mary had it today for the warrant, and it just allows room for the number that we approve at town meeting.
Okay.
And there has to be some little short explanation as to the full and fair cash value on the floor, and how we arrived at that number, and that's it.
Okay. Any other questions?
No. No, that's great.
Was there anything else about the memo or no?
The memo that Diane gave to the board, she was another memo on another matter, the very last item in miscellaneous correspondence Judy. Maybe, yeah, be careful because it might slide.
I presume?
That's Burke, so if you want to just flip that whole stack over, it's also Keith, but.
Because they're continued until next meeting?
Two meetings now.
Well, we're going to continue them. So is it in a folder or?
I think miscellaneous correspondence, the Manil-. Yep, if you see the Manila folder, that's all stuff to take action on. The Manila folder is miscellaneous correspondence.
And it's the back?
It's the very last page in there. Believe it's the very last page. It's a standalone one sheet, piece of paper.
This is the technology matters?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll read it. Technology, subject, technology matters. It is my opinion that department heads and employees should have a written communication from the data coordinator on who is called and when on what issues, and who makes the call communication. Also, it would be a benefit to all departments if there was a clear and written capital plan as to equipment replacement and upgrades with the use of the capital replacement computer slash servers money. I may be the messenger here, but I do believe after last week's email problem, the collective we wants a definitive action plan.
I thought that the problem was a charter problem last, last week.
I think the issue was, who was it and who? I'm not, I'm not sure.
Okay, I mean, that's why I asked, I'm not sure either.
There were a few emails going back and forth, but I think there, you know, it's like a general response and, and, you know, somebody might've got their hand slapped because they made a phone call to somebody, you know, there is no.
Excuse me, I missed out on this excitement.
I just read this memo.
We had no emails.
They, it was no emails for two days.
Pretty difficult to.
Yeah, you were, so you were sending stuff from a personal email account.
I think part of the problem is Briarly covers a piece and Dan DePlanch covers a piece. And nobody's really sure where the boundaries are.
There's no written communication or guidelines to departments or employees as to who calls or when, you know, what does Dan handle, what does Briarly handle? We don't know any of this stuff. So when I have a problem, I, I might call, you know, I say, well, I'll take a chance and call this one and that one. You know, it's specific to my particular, it's just kind of a.
This sounds like it might be a meeting with all parties present.
So that's what we'll do, we'll get, Richard is, we'll get.
So even Briarly and DePlanch. We'll schedule half hour.
If there was like a technology committee, you know, that kind of.
Well, let's see, let's see if we just sit down and talk about it where we are after that.
Thanks very much.
Next on the agenda, Mr. Clemmer.
What's up?
That's for you to tell us.
Looks like this is happening very quickly. I was at District Three last Thursday, and they almost didn't know a lot about it. But it's, it looks like the Patrick administration's got four billion dollars of statewide money to give out for pothole fixing. It looks like thirty thousand, thirty million is coming in tendance for into the state roads. But our budget is to draw down off of twenty-nine thousand, twenty-one dollars. And all we really need to do tonight is, I think she's got the actual.
That's an appointment, it's Tom right in front of you.
Go.
For Burke, there's only two hundred.
For Burke, okay, I thought that whole thing was the Burke.
No, almost all.
And what I'm looking for tonight is for somebody to sign the bottom of that. They pretty much have filled the rest of it out for the contract.
And who, the contractor here is the town of Berlin, so, okay, it's not an outside contractor.
Correct, it's going to be us.
Okay.
And again, I've already filled a lot of potholes. There's other, other things that we can try for. Again, I got to talk to Michael Harrow from District Three and get exactly what.
Well, I had a quick look at it, because Mary sent it this afternoon. And it did seem you could do, you know.
Paint the line.
Potholes, cracking, certain repair.
As long as we get this application in, it looks like we got until June thirtieth to actually act upon it. And then by September thirtieth, I believe we'll be getting paid for it.
Was it, was it based on road mileage or what?
It's the same thing as chapter ninety money. In other words, our, that's how, that's how we.
Because we were considered, we were the bottom of the barrel, you know.
We're the lowest one.
Lowest one, yeah.
But we're the smallest town, we only got forty-eight miles of road. And that's what they, and the population is low, and that's how they come up with our grant.
And it's the same way we get all the chapter ninety.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the Mass dot standard contract form for the pothole money for twenty-nine thousand something? Fifty dollars, and fifty dollars.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye. Now, I understood this work had to be done by the end of June.
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
And most of my work has already been done, and I have scheduled already the line painting and stuff. So I'm going to try and, again, I got to get a definitive answer on exactly what I can use this money for. I understand what it says here, but.
So this is a reimbursement grant, you have to spend it and then.
That's the way I'm reading it.
But what he's asking, though, is, he's already bought most of his material, and he's already done pothole repair after this vicious winter, and that's what this money is for, is to help towns with the hard.
Yeah, you know, I understand that.
So what about DPW departments who have already?
It says including paving projects.
But already spent, already incurred or freshly incurred?
That's what I'm wondering, because the end of April, first of May, I have the hot tub people coming in. We're going to regurgitate or reclaim, however you want to get River Road is on, it's going to be started, and then South Street's going to be started. I'm going to ask tomorrow, or Wednesday, whichever, when I see Mike again, I'm going to ask him if I can, you know, like use some of it for that because potholes completely destroyed that road.
Yeah, no, and there are certainly cracks in it and all of that.
Right, so I'm not quite sure, again, it only started last Wednesday, I think Tuesday or Wednesday.
The application has to be done by Friday.
I understand.
Do you want this or I give this to Keith?
I'll take that, because I'm going to bring it.
I'd like a copy.
I'll come get it tomorrow.
Okay.
I just put a D. final.
Thank you.
Everybody handled, everybody's fingerprints are on that. But I was actually going somewhere else with a question. We have, we have set aside money in that account for reimbursement grants so that we have money to spend.
Prior to.
Prior to the reimbursement. Do we know what the balance in that account is?
Highway materials or?
Or do you have enough money to spend this in your budget?
Well, June will let you deficit, like, for my green communities grant, because she knew I had the grant, she'll let you spend the money and then wait for the reimbursement.
Even if it's over a fiscal year?
It is going to cost you over the fiscal year.
Yes, I just wanted to be sure.
So you should ask June.
That is what the state, well, that's what the letter says. You're going to get reimbursed at the end of September.
Just so we, you know.
Right, ask June.
Because at the, at the town meeting every year, it's voted that you can spend from, I know that kitty, I don't know how much is in there, and that, like, even for my chapter ninety money, it's a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars that comes out of a budget.
Right.
And then I get reimbursed.
Yeah, nobody's voted.
My chapter ninety money was from last year.
Right, of course.
I didn't see any.
Just ask June if, if it's, tell her it's a grant, she know you have it, it's going to be over fiscal year, is that going to be a problem?
Yeah, okay.
And if she thinks it's a problem, tell her, ask her about the.
Tell her, ask her how to fix it.
Yeah, ask her how to fix it. But also ask her about, because we have set aside money for funding reimbursement grants, but I don't think it has as much money in it.
No, I think.
But anyway, check with her and then we can sort that out.
And again, I have to prove what I can spend, so that twenty-nine thousand, I'm not going to tell you I can come up to that much money unless I.
And it's user lose, so.
User lose, right.
I would think.
I will certainly try.
Use it.
Yeah, I mean, there's lots of places that are.
Exactly.
Like in front of my house.
It all has to be done by June thirtieth.
Understand.
There's only five of us here, so.
I understand. Therapeutic cloning.
Yeah, camera, peace.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay.
Seems like in this town, rumors fly.
Okay.
I will say it this way. Four or five weeks ago, there was a rumor going around that I lost control of my men and I lost all the respect of my men. So I in turn have to fix that, okay? I understand it's only a rumor, but I need to address it. So every Monday morning, I have a meeting of complaints, concerns, and our goal for the week. This rumor that I heard happened to be before Monday morning, so I took it under my own wing to say, I need to find out. So I took my four men on this particular morning and said, one thing I need to know. I'm going to ask you very nicely to have a conversation, and then at the end of the conversation, I want to either a no confidence vote or confidence vote, because I really need to know that you want to work with me and not against me. So at that meeting, we spoke for forty minutes about some things, issues that they had with me and I had with them. And we went back and forth for quite, like I said, forty, forty-five minutes. And the end result was, I says, now we can have a paper ballot or we can just start and talk about it. So they all decided that we would do it right now and get it done. So the first gentleman said, I know that Keith is a little different in his way of being a boss compared to what we've had for forty-two years. But I certainly like it, and I'm going to continue to follow his rules and regulations. The next gentleman said the same thing, the next gentleman said the same thing. So I just want you all to know. And I wasn't going to do.
And all four gentlemen said the same.
All four gentlemen said, and I wasn't, I just kind of let it slide five weeks ago. But now it has got a little carried away, it got to the dump, and now it's getting.
That's where it belongs.
Once it gets to the dump, it goes everywhere.
So now it's getting almost a personal thing now, because it's getting out into the public, and they're saying that I'm not qualified to do the job, and my men don't, you know. So I just want to let you know how I'm handling it, and I want you to know when you start hearing the rumors flying, I have full confidence from my men and full respect.
Do you think it's a wide circle or a narrow one that's talking about?
I haven't heard anything.
It's wide enough.
I heard it one place, and frankly, one of your men approached me on it, and I said, well, the thing to do is to talk to them. Sit down, but you took the initiative, and what you just, listen, what you just described, it couldn't be a better process and a more astute managerial approach than you had, yeah.
Exactly, that's what you need to do, you need to address it right up front and take care of it.
I wouldn't worry about, I mean, you, you're in the wrong business if you don't have a thick skin.
And you told me that the day I got the job.
That's right.
And I have no problem.
Don't worry about it.
And that's why I'm sitting here telling you with just what I told you, that's pretty thick skin in case you want it.
I think you're doing a great job.
I just want to let you know, when the rumors start flying, I have full confidence in my men, okay?
Absolutely.
Well, you've got a good crew there.
It is a good crew, and I heard some rumors that I didn't credit given the sources and so on.
All righty, thank you for your time.
Just one thing, another thing, on the, what we're going to do, you know, remember the coincidence, I had written you something and you had the same idea with respect to these raises, yeah. Is that worked out and is that equitable and everybody's happy?
Yes, every good finance company loves it, and yes.
Because is it, is it equal on the?
That, that can be handled at a later date if it goes through.
Okay.
The way that I, I don't want to talk about that right now, because that gets into personnel. We don't do that under the.
Fine, all right.
Well, I just want to make sure that you're okay with the personnel spreadsheet. I didn't send it to you, but the final change is that you have three levels. Your foreman's at the highest level. The bumped down level is master mechanic, where you have two guys, and then one level further down on the grade scale is.
That needs to be talked at a personnel meeting.
But this is what's going into the.
And that's fine, because we, that's fine, because we can, we can always go to change it if we need it.
Okay, just want to make sure it's not changing that, okay, thanks.
And that is what it is right now, so, yeah.
That's what we're going through with, yes, correct.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Don't sweat the small stuff.
Don't you worry about me.
Tomorrow, eleven?
Eleven o'clock, I'll be there. Jason's coming from ACC and Mass coming.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you don't have an appointment, but you're sitting here, so did you have some?
No, they're on the agenda for number four, just approval of, four B, approval of the junk dealer's license.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's routine, but.
Well, okay.
Good evening, board members. This is Carl Wells representing the license holders, and again, we're here with the Thompsons for the renewal of their junk dealer's license within the town of Berlin. And by statute, it expires on the first of May of each calendar year, so we appreciate the board's deference in getting to us quickly to get them on the agenda, to get the renewal of the application.
Okay, let's see.
Has there been a problem?
Nope, not that I know of.
Why'd you hire a lawyer to come in here?
No, it's nothing to do with you guys, it's just, I don't know who is going to be here.
So this junk dealer license has restrictions on it.
Same as before.
So all present and future restrictions apply to this class three motor vehicle junk license. Non automotive, non automotive salvage activities authorized by this license are understood to be incidental to the pre-existing automotive salvage activities. The collection and recycling of non automotive scrap metals shall not adversely alter the character of the automotive salvage activities carried on the premises. In particular, no equipment used only for the processing of non automotive scraps shall be operated on the premises, and no hazardous materials which are not normally handled in the course of processing automotive. Kind of got left off there. No activity which the board of selectmen may in the future judge to be, to adversely alter the character of the pre-existing automotive salvage operations shall be conducted. Licensees shall provide the selectmen a list of the principles of Berlin Auto Parts at each renewal, which I presume is on here. Well, go on.
You're the principal, right?
Only those hazardous materials which are incidental to motor vehicles and appliances shall be handled on site. Hours of operation are from seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, and seven AM to six PM on Saturday. And there shall be no idling of trucks for longer than five minutes, and according with Mass General Law, Chapter Ninety, Section sixteen A. And all unloading of vehicles shall be performed within the gates of Berlin Auto Parts and shall not take place in the driveway or roadway.
Was this advertised like to neighbors this renewal, or is it kind of a routine thing? The initial hearing was advertised, yeah, okay.
Does the chief of police have any problems?
Not at all. I've actually recently been working closely with the Thompsons and Mr. Gross with the pawn shop bylaw that I oppose. Will have some effect on that.
And how, I mean, there was some fuss with the neighbor and everything, how's that going?
I haven't heard from, so I don't know what's going on.
And neither have we.
Neither have you, okay. Now, and we have, we have said to the neighbor that if there was a problem, he should call the police, not because it's necessarily a legal problem, but because we were getting tired of he said, she said, and.
Documented.
So basically documented, there's been no call, so.
He did some of that. He did some of that.
I saw that in the paper.
Yeah, we had a couple, couple that were really unfounded and then.
Yeah, well, and that's why, that's why we asked him to do it, because.
It's a hassle for the town or whatever.
Well, but it's a hassle for the town if we're getting complaints and they're undocumented, and then, you know, we have to bother you, so. Okay, so there had, there has not been a problem when we've got another set of eyes on it.
No, not really.
Okay.
Okay, there was a motion, do I hear a second?
A second, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And you understand, the police are up there not to hassle you, but just to.
No, I understand that, no, yes, no, actually, that was a suggestion. You know, in order to document everything, and, you know, it just got a little ridiculous, but whatever.
All righty, thank you.
I'm out of there.
Okay, thank you.
See you later.
Hello.
Hi. Did you want to talk to us about?
I had a couple things, yeah. Let's see, one we had.
The speed limits.
Speed limits. And this isn't generally, this is just specifically to that one complaint and the possibility.
Sir, remind me which, where was this located?
West Street.
By the Flat Penny.
Okay, that's right, thanks.
I just started brainstorming a little bit, and I don't think this is going to be the first request as we start to move forward, especially with the development and the progress that seems to be made now at Highland Commons and what's to come at River, which getting traffic coming overall is going to become a concern. We're going to have more, more cars on the road, more people trying to cut through neighborhoods.
Five goners.
And I think that we need to try and get ahead of it and come up with, I know some communities have policies on it that, you know, if a neighbor, you know, or a resident comes, that, you know, if it's one person that's complaining, well, we really can't look into every initial complaint, but if we require a petition with a certain amount of signatures, but then have a plan going forward as to what it is we look at for traffic coming. I mean, there's a number of things that we can do that, you know, beyond lowering speed limits with stop signs and even, you know, physical changes to the roadways. A lot of communities have addressed the speed humps or speed bumps, and, you know, even plantings and things like that. So I just think we need to start to think about it before it becomes an issue. I'm looking now at purchasing a piece of equipment, not, not any major expense that would allow us to count cars and get the speeds, so we'll be actually be able to get some accurate counts and see what the speeds are on these roads to do these surveys and see if there are actually some changes that can be made.
Now, would you be, would you write up something in terms of if, I mean, is that up to you or to us? Where, like, say, we would need a petition of twenty people who want this speed limit changed before you do anything?
Yeah, I think it could be me, I mean, it could be something I write up and bring to you, and then we evaluate and decide whether that's what we want to do going forward. I just think we need to have a plan that every time someone comes with a complaint, we're not starting from square one and winging it, that we, that we have something that, so we can give it to people and say, listen, we understand you're going to have concerns, but this is what we're going to need from you before we're able to take action, because it's going to take some manpower and costs of money to actually, you know, to do these studies.
And then, in many cases, we get, have to get approval of the state generally.
Yes, everything will go back to the state, and that's where we have to be very careful, because with technology and vehicles nowadays, cars, you know, are operating faster, and, you know, even though they're going faster, they're safer. They set a lot of the speeds based on the eighty-fifth percentile, so if everybody's speeding, then there's a chance that they'll raise the speed.
Raise the limits.
It's not always that they're going to lower it or leave it as is, there's always potential that they could actually take a look at our stats and say, well, you're right, there does need to be a change, and this thirty-five needs to be a forty, and this forty needs to be a forty-five.
I thought it had to do with density of dwellings and stuff like that.
It, and it does, but we don't have that density that would, that would look at.
And those are fairly broad bands, you know, yeah.
That based upon the density, to say, just based upon this density, we would lower it. Most of our densities, the general speed rules, you know, we'd be at forty mile an hour speed limits everywhere. So, and that's where we'd have to be careful with the number of vehicles and the speed at which those vehicles travel.
So if someone wants to have the speed limit changed, what is the motions that you would have to go through?
So we have to do a traffic count.
That's up to the town to do the traffic count?
Well, we, I mean, we could say, hey, if you want to do it, you would have to hire an engineering firm to do it. From my experience, spend the town that's done it, and we try and work together with the, with the residents.
Right.
You know, so we'd be at traffic counts, we have to do speed surveys, then we actually have to physically go out and have different people actually drive the roads, have three or four people in a car, and one person's driving, another person's observing the speeds, and everyone that's in the car has to drive to come and see what speeds they travel at. It's, it becomes quite interesting, and it does get in depth in how the process goes.
So after you do all that, then you apply to the state?
Then we submit all the paperwork to the state, and they look at it, they can either kick it back and say, listen, you did your, your survey at, you know, at this time of day, that, you know, really doesn't reflect, you know, what the actual traffic is, or we don't believe your numbers, and they may send their own engineers out to look at things, or will make us redo some of it.
Do we have, in your view, a terrible speeding problem in Berlin? Are there any hot spots?
Oh, Lancaster Road is out of control.
Really, is that right?
Out of control.
Flat, nicely paved.
You know, I, I remember that road, I used to say it in the late sixties, early seventies, that was the most idyllic, you know, beautiful old country road, curves and stone walls and big oak trees, and they had to straighten it out, and I said, what you going to create is a speed zone.
It is, and I mean, and even, you know, you, it's South Street, I mean, you see it every day already.
Yeah, wait till they get paved, we're complaining about the bumps, but.
Now picture a Saturday afternoon where Highland Commons is packed, and people aren't going to want to go up that way, and, oh geez, here's a road that my GPS says I can go, and they don't know, they're not familiar with it, and there they go. Yep, and it's a whole new group of people, a new problem to deal with.
Yeah, I've noticed up on Sawyer Hill, once they, once they resurfaced it, people really zoom, and there are lots of curves and a narrow thing that, you know, people should not be driving nearly as fast as they do.
That's like Gates Pond, too, that's pretty curvy.
Before I forget it, I got to pet peeve that drives me crazy. People walk in Berlin roads with their backs to the traffic. Could your officers stop and just in a courtesy thing say, people that are, I mean, this accident was on South Street opposite the tennis courts here a few weeks ago where this young girl plowed into a car in the morning. If anybody was working on that car with their back, they'd be dead.
Was the car just parked on the road? Where was the car?
No, it was parked off the road, and she had driven off and smashed into the back of the car. Richie Warbin's place there, right? Yeah, and, I mean, you know, I mean, I hate, I'm not accusatory, but something, people texting, I don't care what the law is. But I, I see it.
It's not even texting, my kids are like looking for their music. So it's not illegal because it's not texting.
They're looking up a contact to call. Well, it's, see, but it still is illegal because, you know, it's, you're distracted.
It's still distracted.
Distracted driving.
It's still, it's still impeded operation, so it's.
So, I mean, anyway, I would ask you respectfully, if you think it's worthwhile, to just give your officers a heads up and say, just in a very courteous, informative way, stop and say, listen, you know, this is extremely dangerous.
Don't you want to see who's going to hit you?
Right. I don't like what's coming.
Yeah, unless I could hit you if they think you've seen their marker plate. I see it all the time.
Well, you know, I think if you want to start something.
Well, I'll start to look into, I'll pull some things from some other communities, and we'll try and come up with a plan, because if we don't get out ahead of it, we're going to be trying to play catch.
The others who, I mean, planning board, I think, has some stuff, because there was second tier traffic bans. So you might want to have a chat with them as well, because they had, you know, a bunch of stuff that was.
I know, we were talking about some things with Gates Pond and.
Yeah, that was sort of ready to deploy, yeah, oh man. The Gates Pond exit and egress is tragic.
It's, yeah, I can only imagine what it's going to be, so.
Oh, yeah.
It's going to be turn right, go into the gas station, turn around and go the other way to try to get out.
Yeah, it's.
Is there, well, we're at, what are the hotspots for accidents in town?
Well, just to give you an example, I did, I pulled some reports the other day for a company doing a research project, and I think it's, it has to do with Highland Commons, and they wanted about the four ninety-five ramps in that area, so I, I pulled about four tenths of a mile from the Shell to the Gulf, you know, seventy-five crashes over a five-year span in four tenths of a mile.
From, from where in, huh?
From, from the Shell.
Between the two gas stations.
Seven, seven, five.
Seventy-five accidents in five years, and that doesn't include any of the crashes that actually occurred on the ramps, like people coming down the ramps waiting, because those are handled by the state. That, that area is probably the, those, the hottest spot.
Is that state road or our road? Who's responsible for the lights and everything on that?
Well, the state's responsible for the lights themselves, because they're at the, the ramps, but.
But the ramps themselves, the way they're super elevated and designed and everything else, that's the state's?
The state comes in and they, they investigate the crashes on the ramps.
How about, other than that, what would be the second hottest spot?
I would have to look, but it would, I would say Five Corners, that area, maybe River Road.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I drive home there every, every time, and it's like you got to slow down, because people just don't want to wait. They'll just pull right out in front of you if you're going up that.
And that's, that's going to, as we, I mean, that's going to be a difficult intersection as we go forward because of the train tracks. And you get five roads coming together and the train tracks, so you can't back people up over the.
And the other place that's very awkward is, in, another odd intersection is in front of the post office in South Berlin. If people, I mean, how to tell people that you want to go continue on Pleasant Street? I can't tell you how many, you know, like sign language conversations I've had.
No, no, not.
Didn't we have River Bridge have a plan for putting in?
A, a small traffic circle.
Yeah, or something there.
Yeah, basically a mini rotary, yeah.
Well, the other one is Coburn Road coming down on sixty-two in the morning.
Yeah.
That's like, take your breath.
Oh, yes, if you want to turn and go.
But I, but the majority of the, the crashes happen off, off of sixty-two, and the, the roads that come in off of sixty-two.
Which isn't surprising, really.
No, and I, this, I'm actually looking at a, a software package where it kind of takes some of the human element out of our processing of crash reports that would also allow me to, to pull some data very easily and do some hotspot mapping and things like that.
Great.
Great.
Um, the other thing I had was.
It's in there, it's, um.
No, it's in here, right?
Not, that's appointments, that's all work you got to do hands, so, but Judy has in front of her is stuff to be acted upon.
Okay.
And it's item number six, so it's.
So I'm in the, in the process
No, it's, I see.
of looking for a replacement for Duncan.
After that one, Judy, flip.
And.
I think that's a data system?
Here it is, here it is.
That's it, okay. Okay.
Oh, I think it's this one.
No, that was the roadway, that was the speed limit discussion, and that's, thank you.
In, in the process of looking for a replacement for Duncan, unfortunately, we had done some interviews and began the background investigation to who we thought was going to be the best fit, and she has decided to seek employment in another community. So we're doing a couple of other background investigations, we're very fortunate, we had a, a solid group of candidates. But in looking through this, one of the candidates does not have a Police Academy app, which poses some problems. There's a couple of options that the state has, this officer, Kevin Faragold, has been a part-time officer for nine years. So there's, there's a temporary waiver and there's also an exemption of the Police Academy. So looking at his training, I think there'd be no problem to get him a temporary waiver, but my hope is to possibly actually get him an exemption and without even any decisions being made on who'd be hired, but just to kind of look at the process and help with our decision-making. So this would just be to allow me to apply to the, the Training Council to see if they would be willing to, to grant a waiver.
So your primary candidate was a female?
Yes, and she was a part-timer.
One other place, I must forget.
She was, she would have been a great.
Did you have many female candidates?
Um, there were two females that applied, and one was a part-timer already, and the other was someone who was unknown, who has no law enforcement experience at all, so.
Okay.
Unfortunately, she was the only part-timer, you know, only female we had, so that's, that raises some concerns, because we will have to do maybe a little bit better job recruiting and looking out to find, you know, at least another female to be a part-timer.
So you're, you're asking us to, to.
Just to prove the application.
Sign the temporary waiver for Kevin.
We're approving that he should be able to go and get an exemption, correct?
Correct.
This is a lot. We're not approving the exemption.
Well, you're not approving the exemption, this allows us to send in and, and to try and get it, and then.
It's the state that makes the decision.
The state makes the decision, and we would.
But he'd been a part-timer with you.
For nine years.
For this department.
Yeah.
Without academy training or anything.
Right, we've, he, you guys actually approved for him to go to the academy and we would sponsor him.
Twice.
Unfortunately, yeah, twice, we've, we've had four academies pass right now that he hasn't been able to do because of this.
Well, he went to the school hard knocks anyway.
Yeah, it's, it's tough, we, we had a meeting with the Central Mass Chiefs last week discussing training. They're, they're running a Police Academy at Lowell in July, first, they had sixty-six spots and a hundred and thirty-eight applicants.
Wow.
So the reason that he has not been able to take it is because of?
Yeah, but he was sponsored back in two thousand and six, and he had some family issues that didn't allow him to do it, and now it's just been, we didn't want enough academies. So the, the cap for the Training Council to spend on academies is one point two million dollars, which basically allows them to run two academy classes per year each training site. They're looking to up that to one point eight, which was.
So the academy is free for the student?
No, this, this, we.
Who pays for that?
He, you, we elected to sponsor him where he would incur the fees for the academy.
Okay.
So, I did in my FY fifteen budget, put in there for academy fees if we were to find a candidate that needed the academy, so we wouldn't be handcuffed to hire the best academy-trained person, or we could hire the best person that would fit Berlin.
Make sure they fit Berlin.
And that's, that's, that's the key.
Okay.
So I think we've, we've been through that and we know that, that it's important to make sure someone fits, fits into the community.
So this is.
I would, I would move.
Petition to make.
I would move to authorize the chief to petition.
The Municipal Police Training Committee.
Yes, for an exemption.
For.
From academy training.
For Kevin.
For Kevin Trigot.
I was second there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, do you need all three of us to sign?
I, I guess it couldn't hurt, but.
It's only a sale of form.
Yeah, just as a warning authority, so.
Four, fourteen, fourteen.
That's right.
Doing twenty-one today.
You know, you get over, you have to turn twenty-one in July.
It's like, what are you doing tonight?
Yeah, really.
Nothing.
Nothing illegal, actually.
That's right.
Exactly.
So you had a little excitement on Gates Pond, it sounds like.
Unfortunately, yeah, that was the same hump that was broken into a couple of times. It wasn't, it wasn't a random act, and we believe it was probably the same person that was the, you know, suspect in the first break-in.
And you have a suspect in there?
We, we made an arrest on the second break-in, we relied, we were too heavy, I think, on a canine.
Dog must have had a head cold or something.
Well, I've learned a little bit more about the dog since, since the search was done, and the dog was not only a search dog, but also a drug dog. When we entered this particular home, there was quite an odor of marijuana in the home, and I have a feeling that the combination of the, the drug smell threw, and they had two other dogs, threw this dog off a little bit, and then to boot.
What did you bring me in here for now?
And the, the sad part about it is we had another dog that was just a search dog, Marlborough's, and we'd initially called for them, and he wasn't available, became available, didn't, it, it was kind of a, all right, I don't want to show up another canine officer type thing, I'll let him, and, you know, it didn't, it didn't go so well, but we ended up catching him and, thanks to Helen.
Helen Roach?
Yeah, when, when he was found in the basement, he ran, he ended up running across Helen's lawn, he tripped, and when I pulled up, Helen was on top of him.
Oh, right, Helen!
So, she, she, uh.
He wasn't a very big kid then.
Not a big kid, and she knew him, she was as much protecting him from the other homeowner as she was holding him.
Oh, really?
But we ended up with about twenty-seven police officers on Gates Pond, it was quite a show for a few, few minutes. Well, we caught Hudson at chip change, so they sent their entire day shift, their entire evening shift.
Oh, man.
We had Marlborough, Northborough, Bolton, and the state.
Other dog.
Because, well, the way the call came in the second time, they run out of the basement, so one bulkhead door slammed, another bulkhead door slammed, so the neighbors called in his gunshots.
Oh, well, that'll do it.
And then they saw him on the ground, so then they called in his gunshots and one person down.
Oh.
Yeah, well, that'll, that'll get people's attention, yeah.
So it was.
And it did.
Listening to the nine-one-one calls, you would have thought the nine-one-one callers were standing next to each other and trying to one-up each other with what they were saying.
Oh, man.
And Kevin Colley did an incredible job deciphering the information, getting it out to us, and luckily all worked out well.
Alrighty.
Alright.
Great.
Well, thank you for coming in.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Remember next time, bring another coffee.
Yeah, bring me black, no sugar.
And they'll remember.
And tell your officers to talk to people with their back, you know?
I'll talk to them, yeah, just to stop, and e, even just interact and say hi.
Right, absolutely, oh yeah, don't write them a ticket, just.
Right, no.
April twenty-eighth.
Yep.
That's when we're continuing.
For the next one.
Oh, right, gotcha.
Alright, have a good night.
It's been very good checking with me on when it gets moved and when it gets moved, so.
Alright, we have a review of the final annual town meeting warrant and the proposed spreadsheet. So, do the people want to look at this? What's, has anything been changed in this? I know Diane said that she modified the pilot.
From Coleman and Page gave the solar language, you want to look at that? And another, Brian Kylie Riley from Coleman and Page did the pawn shop bylaw rewrite, which the chief looked at and said, fine, they were just changing the idea that originally referred to regulations where it should have been referring to bylaws, because these are bylaws.
And this has all been looked at by eyes and more eyes and more eyes, and it's all.
Originally Joel looked at ninety-nine percent of it and okayed it, and he recommended the send-offs to Rick Collins for the solar and Brian Riley for the pawn shop part. The other part that came in late was the Finance Committee's recommendations, I didn't have them at a certain point today. I was going to drop them because they weren't entirely clear what they sent out last week. Barry came in this afternoon and sat with me, he got their spreadsheet of their recommendations.
And I see they're in here.
But I didn't have that.
Yeah.
So Barry sat with me as, at three o'clock, and we banged them all out. They actually officially came here from the FinCon at six o'clock by email, which I originally, my original inclination was to blow them all out, because they weren't clear as to what was what, so, um.
Okay, well.
But they're in there.
They're in there?
Yeah.
They're in there, it looks.
And if anything's wrong, we can correct it on the floor.
True.
So.
Okay, well then start signing back page.
Four, four originals, yes, please.
Four originals?
Four originals.
The special town meeting warrants were mailed today.
Okay.
I got one.
You did already?
No, there was something in my box.
Wow.
Well, you have a box at the.
Oh, me, yeah.
I have a T.O. box, there you go.
Yes, just kidding.
Is that all done?
That's all done, all three.
Alright, those are done?
Those are done.
Keep them all together.
Can I just stop, can you get him to just my way, I'll double, triple check them.
That one's got.
Buster put them up tomorrow.
That way, I'm double checking, you're triple checking, okay?
Yeah, I like it, that's good.
Okay, and here is the.
Thank you.
So I talked to Peggy this morning and we decided to take off the salaries that are at the bottom of the spreadsheet, the personnel spreadsheet, because they haven't been approved at town meeting, so I couldn't see keeping them on there when.
They're going to be in the budget, ultimately.
Yeah, they'll be in the budget, you can see them in the budget, but they're not going to be in the bottom of this anymore.
Other changes were the eighteen-seventy Town Hall manager is in there, the Board of Health clerk is in there. The inspector slash land use clerk is in there, and the changes to Keith's DPW laborers, so. The foreman is at the highest grade, I don't know them off the top of my head, and the other.
Operator driver laborer.
Yeah, and then there's like a master, and then there's a regular, one person remaining at the regular job title.
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry, what are you taking off or?
At the bottom here, we had.
Oh, you had, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so they're all, yeah, they're removed and.
Like, I don't see what you.
Talking about?
I didn't see what you took off, you'd already taken it off, so, good, that's why I didn't see it, alright.
So if we can take a vote on the personnel spreadsheet.
Move to approve the personnel spreadsheet as presented to the meeting this evening.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a bill from Marlboro Pest Control for sixty-five dollars for the eighteen-seventy Town Hall.
Move to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll let you do that. We have a approval of a reserve fund transfer request for three hundred dollars.
For election expenses.
For election expenses.
Move to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think it's the clerk, is it the clerk?
Yeah. Right up here. We have approval of auctioneer license for E. Guy Sawyer.
Move to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're going to be busy tonight, Walker.
Yeah.
Um, we did the junk dealer, and we have Jennifer Sirmak doing business at Berlin Farms for a frozen dessert ice cream mix, confectionery soda water on the Lord's Day.
Move to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have a on a point, to a point, to the CBA, approval of Stephen Morrison and Patricia Jackson as associate members of the Board of Appeals.
They, did the Board of Appeals recommend this, make these recommendations?
Yes.
They didn't, okay. Did you?
Yes, they did not meet with third candidate who didn't show Paul Keller.
Okay.
For the two that showed, they interviewed them and voted to support them.
Okay, then, I will move to a point.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You sign two places.
Did the auctioneer's license require multiple signatures?
You all have mine to sign on, yes.
Yes, I gave it to you.
Oh, okay, and then the.
Not the auctioneers, the Lord's Day, the Sunday ice cream license.
The auctioneers, yes.
But auctioneers, I think, was only.
Only one, okay. I just want.
Okay, it's always good to check, so that.
So.
Mary doesn't say.
Emailing us tomorrow to say, can somebody stop by on Tuesday?
Okay. So you have to grab the chair. Here's an envelope here.
I can't believe you brought that chair over here.
It's just a short distance.
It's just a short chair.
That is like the shortest chair.
It's a shorter desk. The building's face Walter has now.
She likes that, huh?
Look at all the space you have now.
I know it.
You got elbow room.
Plus, when she has a head cold, she's near you, not me.
I was thinking, I was, I appreciated the fact she didn't move over here until she was over it, that.
Oh.
Yeah.
So what?
And that she didn't move over here until she was over it.
I'm all, I'm good.
Okay, this is from Richard Sardell, Data System Coordinator, we have just been made aware of significant requirements which impact our budget requests. Okay, this is from Richard Sardell, data system coordinator. We have just been made aware of significant requirements which impact our budget request. There's been significant growth, three point seven times since June eleven in our data storage file sizes, which affects the amount of data that needs to be backed up, which puts us into a higher cost here. Combined with some minor cost adjustments, increases our cost to Briarly by three hundred dollars per month, or thirty-six hundred dollars per year. We'll be looking into the causes for this growth more fully to help contain it in the future. Second, we experienced a catastrophic email failure last week, which uncovered a hole in our maintenance coverage. Charter system is considered third-party software and is not covered as a normal item in the maintenance agreements. This is consistent with all other third-party software for which the using department has financial responsibility, except for the PAMET system, which services public safety and is covered as a line item with Briarly within our current maintenance agreements. We will be adding charter as a line item with onsite services to have a designated responsibility for working with charter systems when necessary. This will cost two hundred dollars per month, another twenty-four hundred per year. So he submitted a revised budget that's gone from purchase of services from thirty-five nine hundred to forty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars, an increase of six thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. And we need to approve that.
Move to approve. It does sound like he's addressing some of the things that Diane was talking about earlier, and it's probably still a good idea to have people in, but.
Yeah.
I, I would move to approve.
I'd second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we already talked to the police chief about lowering the speed limit.
Yep.
And we approved the waiver. Discussion of summer schedule.
It's too early bringing it up again.
No, no.
We have dates through May only.
Starts in June, goes through August.
So you go.
So Labor Day is Monday, September first? Yes.
I believe that's true.
That's Labor Day.
September first. Is that what you said?
Yeah.
That's early.
Yeah.
Early as it gets.
That's true.
You go every other week or once a month?
Every other week.
Every other week.
Wow, that's not that far away.
I know you're being broadcast, but is anyone going far away? Are there any quorum crunch times that you can foresee, or?
Well, well, I was gonna say, we have a definite meeting on July fourteenth with the FinCon.
Right.
So if you skip the seventh.
That would mean, let's go back then to thirtieth, right?
Then you'd have a meeting on the thirtieth, and then you'd skip the twenty-third, and you'd have a meeting on the sixteenth, right? And then you'd have a meeting on the second.
That, that makes good sense.
And then if you go forward, you'd meet on the fourteenth in July and the twenty-eighth, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then the eleventh in August and the twenty-fifth. And then we go back on, in September, regular.
Well, I would suggest, since it's so early this year, that we, um, as you said, we meet the twenty-fifth of August.
Or go the first and.
Go to the eighth?
Yeah. Yeah, because we meet just the week before.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
And then the eighth, we start again.
Start again.
So just June.
Start, so we meet June second, we skip the ninth, we go the sixth, I wrote it in here.
Oh, thank you, okay.
We go the sixteenth, we skip the twenty-third, we go the thirtieth.
Move to approve the proposal for summer schedule?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess I should put this down.
June two, sixteen and thirty, July fourteen and twenty-eight. No, I guess eleven.
If something came up, we had to, uh, unexpected, pay attention, 'cause we'd just call a meeting and post it correctly.
The same is the case, and, and every once in a while, we also had situations in which we had a quorum that weren't gonna be there in particular weeks, so we sometimes have to shift it.
Everybody's gotta be on vacation.
But thi- this is the, the working hypothesis.
And you voted that, that's unanimous, yeah?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Alright, so, none. Sorry, I'm halfway through the executive session of the eleventh of February, where you met with Courtney.
Speaking of her, uh, is it on a ten? The, I'm supposed to do a tour of the property, and I volunteered to.
Uh, yeah, I think it is ten, I can confirm that with you.
When you confirm it with her, say, tell me how you, she wants to meet, whether here, whether up there, okay? And I, I can make that, so. Thank you, yes, I knew.
Okay. Alright, the Mabel Marble Scholarship Fund. We have a letter here to Sylvia Marble to thank her for her check of twenty-five hundred dollars for the Mabel Marble Scholarship Fund.
Will we accept it?
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So the guidance departments already have the application?
Okay.
And the deadline is May fifth for people to send applications in.
I'm just, in the way of background, Tom, you must know who, the Marble, is that the old Marble family in Berlin and David's relatives?
Yes.
And, uh, so Mabel was what, his grandmother or something, or going back further?
I think it was like a great aunt or a grandmother. I'll have to ask, Jo- Joanie knows.
Oh, so they put together, yeah. Alright.
Now, she was down in Florida, wasn't she?
She is.
Now, now she's in, in Cape Cod.
Yep.
Oh, she's still alive?
Yeah.
Sylvia.
Sylvia is.
Oh, Sylvia is.
Sylvia gives, gives the money every year that's given out as the scholarships. Benderson facts regarding mitigation invoice.
Yeah, I will, um, get to that this weekend. I'll, um, what I need to do is I need to get, I need to get a copy and put it in a notebook of that damn contract and the amendment, because it comes up, and then seven or eight months later, when I've recycled the paper, it comes up again.
Okay, I think I have them as PDFs.
Hmm?
I can, I think I have PDFs I can send you.
Yeah, that would be great, because then I could throw them in a file and, uh, yeah, 'cause no sooner do I recycle them three or four months later than the question comes up again. I mean, there's no, no problem with that, but I wanted to cite him chapter, verse, and the amendments and everything, and I just didn't have it in front of me.
Okay. Okay, so Jeremy O'Connell, firefighter EMT, said, "With one of our fire families serving overseas, I was wondering if we could possibly fly a single Blue Star flag on the flag like out front for our brother Rich until his safe return home. The flag will be paid for with private funds."
You know, I think it's a nice gesture, and I'm glad we've got a fireman here. I'm glad I'm not in his place overseas, but there are a lot of American boys overseas that don't have flags loaned for them. Um, I just have a problem with that. I, I don't, uh,
Well, I mean, I think it, I think it's, it's the Blue Star is for all, isn't it? A Blue Star flag for all people who are serving overseas?
Oh, that's a different case.
I mean, it doesn't have his name on it or anything.
Okay.
It's, it's simply.
To me, it's like the Gold Stars during World War Two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, for everybody. Then I would move, we approve it.
And I would second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. Um, uh, the Crown Vic. So this is from the Board of Fire Engineers. At the meeting on Thursday, April tenth, the Chief Richard notified the board, Chief Ricard, sorry, notified the board that all the radio equipment had finally been transferred out of the two thousand five Ford and made the recommendation that the vehicle be declared excess property from the Fire Department. The board voted unanimously declaring the property as excess and releasing it back to the town for use or disposition as decided by the Board of Selectmen, and the title is included in here.
Um, Peggy was in today and said that it's not past practice with even Chief Ricard or the Selectmen, for the Selectmen's office to handle the disposition of the car. But rather that he would give us the fair market value of the car, and that you would decide what.
Sorry, he would be.
He would, Chief Ricard, would find what the value of the car is, and that if there was an auction of it, he would host viewings of it. And then we could do it if it's over a certain dollar value. There's a procedure in there. Items over five thousand dollars are supposed to be auctioned. That was voted to have.
Do we think that's worth more than five thousand dollars?
No, and so then the other thing would be that he would handle the, um, the disposition of it otherwise. And he, actually, there's a history of him doing it with an old forestry truck, and the prior command car, which was, again, the old police cruiser gets brought down to the Fire Department.
Yep.
The prior command car that we're actually talking about replacing now is, um, same thing, they handled the disposition of it. You would vote to surplus it, that they would handle the disposal of it, like the chief just did with the speed monitoring sign.
Right.
It was deemed scrap metal, and they got it over to Berlin Auto Parts.
Right.
And maybe that's the way that this ought to go too, I don't know. I don't know the value of it. I don't have an odometer reading, we just have the, we have the title.
Well, maybe we should go look at it. I mean, the, I've seen, I just saw stuff in the item for something surplus in Clinton, and they wanted at least four hundred dollars for it. But then you put a bid in. Or there is Munista bid.
Right.
And there's another one that also does governmental auctions that's approved by the state of Massachusetts.
Yeah, we don't have to do an auction, 'cause it's less than five K.
Well, Munista bid, I mean, it's, it, you put it on there and you get bids.
Mm-hmm.
So you might get more for it through this than sticking it in the newspaper.
Okay. Why would you do that? Why would she do that?
Well, I can work with Bruce on it.
I think I.
Aye.
Do you want to surplus it? Vote to surplus it?
Yes, we would, I, I would move to surplus the two thousand five Crown Victoria, formerly the, um, police chief's command car. I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So just leave this out.
Okay, I can copy that for you if you want, and then, um.
I don't need a copy.
Okay. Just the idea is, I think a degree in community is not supposed to expand the fleet ultimately, right? So something's gotta go.
Right.
Okay.
Well, and they don't have any use for it, I mean, it's.
They're not, yeah, they're not trying to retain it.
Um, let's see. Sudbury Valley trustees request for a governmental cosponsor to take title to Boylston Conservation Land. I presume, Walter, you know about this?
Yeah, I, I didn't know this letter was coming, frankly, but the, the whole idea is that, in applying for this grant from the state, if we get the money for this so-called landscape protection grant of one point five million, um, every piece of land that is purchased, let's say Berlin purchases it, it needs to be someone else holding a CR on it, so it's kind of in double jeopardy, you know? You can't decide to sell it, there's kind of a.
Says someone other than the town.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm not sure whether they're asking Berlin to hold the CR on Boylston, acquired land. I've been talking on a daily basis, too, and I haven't heard of this.
Governmental entity to take title.
Yeah, I think they're talking about somebody to hold title to the Boylston land, they will hold the CR.
Right, I see what this is. I, I had this email. They, they were looking for the Division of Fish and Wildlife, State Division, to hold CRs on land that we're acquiring in Boylston. That would be acquired in Boylston by the Conservation Commission, that's what that.
But is, Boylston would be the municipal title holder?
Yeah. And Fish and Wildlife would be the nonprofit, if, if it agrees to do so.
We are at this time looking for a government entity to partner with us on our conservation property acquisitions in the town of Boylston.
Yeah, and they're looking, and they're looking for Fish and Wildlife.
When I read that, I thought that they were having trouble getting from Boylston to be willing to take title to it.
But says, but the town of Boylston has declined to participate and doesn't wish to hold any.
Yeah, 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 so, so basically, I think what they're looking for is they're looking for a state or municipal entity to hold the title. And then Sudbury Valley can hold the CR.
Alright, if you read it.
As the, yeah, that's, that's, I think, what they're at.
If you and DFG are interested, we can have a follow-up meeting to go over detailed information about each of the properties for which we would need a partner and the interest that a partner would hold.
DFG being the fish and chicken.
So it's.
What, who holds, when we did that acquisition with Sudbury Valley up near, or skipped libs?
Yeah, Kyra piece.
Kyra piece. Um, as I remember it, there were forty-odd acres that were in Boylston. Who took title to that?
Well, Preston gave it to SVT. You know, I would've protested it a little bit, but nevertheless, they, uh, it's SVT.
Just SVT only.
Right.
Because Boylston didn't want to hold title even then, didn't they?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You have this map, this is interesting. This, this land, um, I always get upside down here looking at these maps. Oh, this, you know, this is Berlin, Boylston, North Pro here.
Yep.
All these lines.
The blue lines.
The blue lines are literally almost inaccessible wetlands.
That's like the Knack Meadow area and stuff, isn't it?
Right, yeah, and, and the acreage involved in that would accrue greatly to our goal of protecting five hundred acres. And that the, um, Boylston Selectmen just refuse to protect any more land, because I guess they're angry, 'cause the Huachusa Reservoir takes up half of the town, you know? But we've got people working on them anyway. But there's no reason that that could be protected. Yeah, there it is right there. All this orange land, and this piece here is that so-called summer sun where that woman's putting in the nature center up off of Linden Street, goes way back in there.
So, this grant that you're talking about, does that require any level of municipal spending, or is it just a?
Yeah, we have to match it in kind or with money, and we have just about enough money, and with things like Louise Fuerstein giving CRs on her two house lots in Backland, there's almost, you know, there's three or four hundred thousand dollars in value that we could put towards that. And we've got a number of, um, we've got a number of bargain purchases going, and we can put that towards it. But it frankly is gonna eat up just about all the money that we have and have coming in to do this.
But you have it in, in hand now?
That we have in hand now, plus what will be coming in from Highland Commons.
Wow.
But it's, it's the big thing, you know, it's the front, it's the east face of Pisgah, um, it links, it, this, we own this, and we own this, and we just picked up this from Matthews. You know, this is Jones Road, and that's that twenty-five acres up there. Blinky's house is right here, connects this, so the Oberg Trust is meeting this on the fifteenth, tomorrow, I guess. And to discuss whether they'll let us have the upper half of this, plus a right-of-way, plus this lot. Then we'd have Greenway, your whole Emerald Necklace, that you could hike and ride horses and travel all the way through there. So, and then all of this will be protected. The Gold is farm off of Larkin Road. We have a deal on that, at three hundred thousand less than what the assessed raise value was. Um, and then one of the Rainville boys are looking to buy the rest of it in fee, you know, to own it, but.
They gonna put an agricultural restriction on it, or?
Yeah, yeah, be a CR. But the tough one is the one up on top of Barnes Hill, they can't seem to make up their minds, so we're hoping that, we're just hoping it'll go through.
Yeah.
We're working on it daily.
So that gas pipe was supposed to, what, come down here and go through?
Goes through this piece here, across Kivya's land, yeah, right up.
And then it goes right at the corner of Barnes, uh, uh, of Ball Hill Road, doesn't it?
Right, crosses Rainville's field right here, and goes across, yeah, up behind, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Crazy. It's like I saw open land.
Yeah, the map is up there.
Well, I, you know, I could see, do you saw the, the part that I, did the yellow highlight come out when I sent that email? Uh, when I, of the state statute, because.
No, there was no highlight on it.
Oh, okay, 'cause the state statute said that notwithstanding the ability to take it, that it wouldn't, you couldn't take land in a reservation, a park, et cetera. And I had, I had highlighted that, but sometimes when you, you know, you send things via the email, but that's what I, that's what I was pointing out, um.
That would make it kind of hard for them to get through town.
I'll reset it again, and I'll bold it, okay?
The gas line, by the way, going through Berlin is not interstate, so I don't know if FERC would have power over us, it would have precedent over the state.
You mean?
And if it's within the state, yeah, the gas line going through Berlin isn't that three footer going across the northern tier from Pittsfield to Drakeet, it's the, just links Littleton.
It's one foot, it's coming out of Bolton.
One foot diameter or smaller.
Yeah, no, I understand, but where does the gas come from?
It comes, there's a line that goes through Bolton.
Up to Littleton.
And coming out of there.
The gases are being drilled at Bolton.
Well, there are lines existing along the south of the Mass Pike.
Right.
Main trunk lines that come in and deliver all the way up into the North Shore, southern tip of Maine, southern tier of New Hampshire. Now they wanna bring a bigger one in from the northern tier, North of Route Two, and feed that also.
And is that gas coming from Pennsylvania, Western New York?
It's fracking gas. It's fracking gas.
Oh, I see what you're talking about. Yeah, my point is-
It could come from Louisiana, you know, the pipelines are all over.
Well, they're saying that it's fracking gas out of Pennsylvania.
Yeah, yeah.
And then there's already a line that runs all the way across the Bolton, the town of Bolton.
There is one that goes from Fitchburg down to Fitchburg.
I didn't know you were asking about the original destination. Yeah, no, I was just saying, I mean, it's part of an interstate piping system, clearly.
Right, oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
The, the Bolton line has existed since the sixties, I guess sixty-three.
Mm-hmm.
So this is a, this would be a, a T off of it that goes from Bolton through Berlin, Northbrook, down to Worcester. This, give or take, is, did you ever see that?
Yep. Yes, I saw that one, uh, you emailed this one, right? Yep.
Well, I emailed, yeah.
There's another one online. Somebody put one up on the Berlin neighbors thing page.
That's an eye test.
Well, this is useless.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know what it is.
Well, it's to show the grand plan.
Yep.
You know, if you Google up natural gas, you get all kinds of interesting stuff. The whole pipeline in America and where it's come from.
I think you took a pen.
Sorry about that.
All right, let's move along here. Um-
Did you, are you taking a vote on, or are you getting involved in that per se? Or is there anything back you wanna give to Sudbury Valley trustees on that, about being?
I would take that as informational at this time.
Is this informational? Okay.
Okay.
Uh, let's see. Uh, discussion, Central Mass Regional Planning. Request of communities to join the FY twenty fifteen joint procurement. So I believe last year we did oil with them.
Yeah.
Um, you know what? Before we do anything like oil, I think we need to talk to Keith because there were issues with them-
On the service.
On the service part of it. And I don't know if that's been remedied or not.
Okay, let's talk about that.
So they also have diesel, gasoline, propane burner boiler maintenance.
Well, we don't have, I mean, we don't have storage facilities for diesel, oil, or gasoline.
But we can talk, I'll talk to Keith about the boiler maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
And elevator maintenance.
And elevator maintenance. If they can get something cheaper than, and the generator, we have.
Well, let's talk about the service issues on the oil stuff first, because I would wanna buy into a purely service contract if they're not really very good at delivering the service component.
Now, there's another one here that's the EMS medical supply. Did, did Denny's-
That's been pushed out to Denny and Police Fire and Border Health if anybody had any interest in that. I don't know if they are. But that's just, that's informational, cause they're either interested, I don't know, they haven't come before us with any
Okay.
Contract. And I don't think, I don't, and Denny can't contract on that himself, can he? To get involved in that per, joint purchase?
No.
No, I-
They'd have to come here.
Yeah.
And it's never, and I've never seen it, so.
Okay. All surveys have to be returned by April twenty-eighth for your agency to be eligible to participate. Well, if they're saving money, there needs to be a reason why they're not doing it.
Sorry?
I said if we would be saving money, I think there needs to be a reason. We, we need to look into it, don't you think?
Do you want me to get an illicit, a response from them?
Yeah, get a response on, you know, I mean, they're showing you the pricing, so they should be able to compare
Mm-hmm.
what they pay now.
Yep.
Because normally-
And we would need that next week, right, if we're gonna take action, because the twenty-eighth would be the next time that we'd be meeting after that.
Yep.
We'd be on Tuesday the twenty-second, everyone?
So we would need it, we would need it by the twenty-second.
Yeah.
And y'all, but Tuesday's not a problem for everybody. Everyone's gonna be here on Tuesday, the twenty-second, unless you know?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, we have receipt of the Clifton Larson FY thirteen audit.
Okay. What does it say? We're in trouble?
Usually says the same thing every year, that-
We're doing a good job.
We don't have policies and procedures in place.
Of course, certain things.
For certain things. So here's the, uh, a deficiency in internal controls. Oh, no, this is just telling you how they define it. So somebody wants to retake these home and read them.
You know, I don't wanna do it right now, but should that be on a kinda list of things that we should, we should?
Review.
I, I-
We generally do.
Policies and procedures.
We generally do, yeah.
Want that on next week's agenda? And I have it electronically. I can send it to all of them.
Yeah, that would be fine, because there's no sense, I mean, I'd, I'd rather read it, you gotta talk about it.
Department head monthly reports. We have the police department only.
Only.
Um, I will, it's my fault at the Highway Department. I haven't, um, it's my job, I guess, to be the squeaky wheel. I'll talk with Keith and I had some ideas on how to craft it up so that it gets out more information, so I'll talk to him about that.
All right, we're onto miscellaneous correspondence. It's Berlin Earth Day cleanup, Saturday, May third, eight AM to three PM. They need volunteers.
Mm-hmm.
You can sign in and pick up your bags at Parish Hall in the town center. Hold drinks, ice cream. We have a risk report, if anybody wants to read it for cities and towns across New England.
No thanks.
We have the Beacon.
Get it at home.
Uh, the Maya Board of Directors approved a second award of two point five million in participation credits for Maya members.
Good.
Mass Association of Conservation Committees is inundated with calls from members about the gas lines.
Oh, that has the email in it, right?
Walter, you wrote that?
Yeah, did they? Is April eighth, they, did they, oh, that's a letter I wrote. Yeah, I sent it to, um, I talked to Mass Association of Conservation Committees, and they will have information in a couple of weeks about that.
But the other thing, didn't, didn't that fellow from Tennessee Gas come in here? And when you told him about the letter we wrote last week?
Yes.
Say that that would definitely trigger a public information meeting?
He felt that that was gonna bump us up sooner, and he gave me the P, the Tennessee Gas PR contact.
Yeah.
But I told him, I said, you've not asked for us to make contact with them. He said, your vote alone will prompt the company to make contact with us. So he gave me their PR information, and I gave him back our information.
Yeah.
Said we generally meet Mondays, and that's where it's at. But there's a whole bunch of towns that they're dealing with simultaneously, and I guess their main PR man is Al, Allen Four, or Force. And he just had a big meeting last Monday in Draket, and I think he's going town by town, picking them off as they go.
I, I watched one of those meetings, and there's a lot of, hmm, fluff, and, you know, there's a lot of
Sure.
Selling.
Before I leave this, this is, this is the language that I was talking about. The first part of this deals with the gas pipeline company being able to petition or taking property rights in eminent domain to run the gas line. But then, um, the second paragraph, which deals with limitations and qualifications, says, "No lands or rights of way or easements therein shall be taken by eminent domain under the provisions of this section in any public way, public place, park or reservation, or within the location of any railroad," blah de blah, "except that such pipeline may be constructed under any public way or any way dedicated to the public use, provided that there's compensation for the benefits." But, uh, "park or reservation" seems to be an excluded, uh, area from the eminent domain procedures.
That would be good.
Yeah, that just, yeah. And that was, I, I, as I say, I had yellow highlighted that, but anyhow, through on the email.
Dictating all that land paid off, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe, yeah.
Uh, we have from Diane Pierre.
Oh, that, that, by the way, doesn't mean that the authority having capacity to manage that land can't grant it. It just means it can't be taken by eminent domain, which is good. Puts you in the driver's seat.
Right.
If, if in fact there isn't some judicial qualification or whatever of that phrase, but it seems pretty clear in the statute.
Interesting.
Diane sent some, um, answers.
Oh, what, so what, were you reading? What is that a?
I'll, I'll mark, it's, it's at the end of that email.
No, but is it, is it a state law?
It's a state law that Joel sent us, yes.
Constitutional article, maybe?
It's, uh, Mass General Law's one sixty-four seventy-five C. It's in the email.
So it's a general law, yeah.
And if you, Joel sent it.
Yeah. Okay.
And if you look at it, because I sent it back and I highlighted this portion after I read it, and that's where, that's where I just read it.
Great.
Okay?
Yep, thanks. Sorry.
Now, are we done?
We're done.
We're done.
Veterans work off program.
Move to adjourn, no.
Veterans work off program. A veteran must be domiciled in Berlin to receive the exemption. You can require the veteran to be owner occupied. The law allows a designated work for a veteran physically unable to volunteer. The property receives the exemption.
Okay.
Cause we had some questions about that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, blah, blah. This is Naughton votes to deny debate on Berlin's local aid during budget process from Red Mass Group. As a local official in Berlin that relies on local aid, you may be interested to learn that in a straight party line vote, Massachusetts Democrats led by Bob DeLeo voted to disallow any amendments regarding local aid or Chapter Seventy funds to be taken up during this month's budget process. Representative Naughton voted for these rules and against local aid debate. And you can go to Red Mass Group, and there's an article about it. Uh, this is, just tells us that we're getting pothole money.
Just on a clarification of that, we don't, um, maybe a debate could go both ways. We don't, we don't know whether Naughton was protecting us or harming us, and I suspect he, on local aid, he would not want to, um, hurt local aid, so I don't know how to, you know, I would read that the wrong way.
Yes, it did seem a little-
One-sided?
Yeah.
Especially since it was called Red Mass Group?
Yeah, right.
Is a common name. All right, pothole money. The house weighs a mean budget, trims state spending, and includes targeted local aid increases. Uh, charter.
Just an apology for the email?
Yeah. A copy of their annual financial report from Massachusetts, if anyone wants to read it.
Okay, did the-
I copied the cable advisory committee.
Just for those of us.
Uh, this is from the Department of Housing and Community Development to write a first refusal, Five Village Lane in Berlin. This is from Robert Morrison in Village Lane.
Eloise's copied and the assessors were copied.
Who lives at Village Lane. The Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, has received your notice of intention to sell your home at Five Village Lane. This letter is to inform you that pursuant to the Affordable Housing Ride, deed rider which restricts your property, DHCD hereby exercises its right of first refusal and is proceeding to locate an eligible purchaser of your property. The period to find an eligible purchaser will expire July ninth.
Okay.
The sale price is one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. The, and there's this formula, so the price for the new buyer will be one hundred and forty thousand dollars.
And Village Lane is one of the Sawyer Hill?
Yes.
I understood that the Board of Appeals had a hearing last week on a request down in Alden Drive, down in Lower Pleasant Street. I think it's called Alden Drive, and those condos that were built down there.
The Whitney Road area.
Somebody wanted to take it out of Forty B. This is just what someone told me, and I can understand why they went to the Board of Appeals first.
I don't think, it wasn't Forty B, it was-
Is that Whitney Estates?
Yeah, Whitney Estates.
Yeah.
It wasn't Forty B. It was to change the way that the trust has to vote, whether you have to empanel member from, so many representative votes, percentage votes of, from affordable units.
So it had nothing to do with taking it out of?
No.
Oh, okay, so-
But it was changing the representative vote on, on the board of trustees for the condominium complex.
All right, okay.
I don't know the outcome of that. I don't think they've decided yet.
Okay.
We have something from Oars. Get engaged with our rivers this summer. And let's see, we have Midnight Realty Trust versus the Berlin ZBA. So we have a complaint titled Midnight Realty Trust versus the ZBA to be filed in Worcester Superior Court regarding the McKean's ZBA hearing at Forty Summer Road. The plaintiffs are represented by attorney Mark Brobowski, who is also representing the Johnsons in Maplewood.
Is that a subsidiary of Midnight Auto Supply?
I don't know. I don't know. What is the case about?
It's the sliver of land next to the McKean's property that the Larkins held on to, because they had separate title. The bank foreclosed on the Larkins' main parcel. You remember this?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Twelve-square-foot parcel of land?
Yeah, so.
And they didn't foreclose on the separate parcel?
Correct. And they were trying to have the McKean's purchase the parcel from them in order to have frontage to have a divisible lot.
Right.
And instead, the McKean's got a variance from the zoning board of appeals, so they don't need that parcel anymore. The Larkins are appealing that.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we have a local aid estimate based on the house weight and means. If we followed the link, we'd find out what it was.
Sorry.
River Bridge ZBA comprehensive permit needed. What do we decide on this?
Uh, oh, there's going to be a, a, a new process. It's not a comprehensive permit.
It's a luau, LAU?
Right, which would be the town's first at Eloise, and I suspect, I suspect you've looked into it a little bit. It's gonna be a selectman decision on whether to approve that LAU.
So the LAU stands for Local Action Units.
Yeah, it's not a ZBA comprehensive permit.
Is it by only the rental, or?
Did you just bone up on it, Judy? You gave me a-
We will have to bone up on it.
River Bridge is a lip, but it's permitted under the subsection of Local Action Units, LAU. The LAU process allows SHI units without the comprehensive permit. This procedure is allowed due to River Bridge's zoning-based approval. I will confirm this with Chris and Janice in advance of a meeting that we may have.
Who sent that?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think what they're saying is because when we-
Brian Bush Heritage Property?
Rezone that land.
Yep.
We rezone that use, so they don't need a comprehensive permit to set local zoning aside. So now you're simply talking about a board that will approve the terms that, uh, support the affordable rental units, so. There's really not, there's no zoning to be done, cause the zoning's done and the site plan will be done by the planning board.
Well, that sounds like it's gonna be easier than, faster than the Forty B thing.
Tom, do you, where are we now, do you know, with respect to meeting our requirements for ten percent? Are we?
Eloise told me five percent now, because, because Northbrook Two is gone.
Five percent? Oh, yeah.
Is gone?
Well, it doesn't count anymore. It's just sitting there.
Doesn't count anymore. And that had brought us up to?
It was like forty-six years? No.
No, no, I, I, I was, cause I thought, I thought we were at-
The last, the last time, no. Well, if we had included River Bridge.
Yeah.
But without River Bridge and without Northbrook Two, she said we were at five percent. Because we were talking about that place that wants to buy the Peach Orchard on Taylor Road. And she was saying that, um, I was, and we were vulnerable.
I, I thought it was more like seven or eight, but I could be wrong. Cause we were considerably over with the two of them. I mean, way over.
This was last, two weeks ago.
But we are definitely under, I mean, there's no question we're in, I mean, you can bait by eight, so whatever.
We're still vulnerable.
You never get ahead with it. Well, again, if those two projects go through, we will.
And what, now, River Bridge, wh, so when do, do they say it goes through? When they pull the building permit? Or actually, when the building permit is pulled?
That was my understanding.
Okay.
When they pull the permit.
Okay.
And then it's, I believe, they pull the permit, and then it is good for some transitional period. I believe it's like two years. And if it isn't occupied at the end of two years, it drops off the list again, which it don't, you know, don't- the list again, which it don't, you know, don't.
Right.
It's been a while since I looked at. But that's why Northbrook Village dropped off, because it went too long
Yeah.
beyond the, uh, the approvals and the issuance of permits. And now it would have to be, I mean, it can come back online, conceivably, but it will stay offline until.
It goes out of bankruptcy?
Yeah.
Not that we don't have enough to do, but is that Northbrook Village Two thing anything that it, it, I get bits and pieces of it from here and there, people involved, and it sounds just a catastrophe, the whole thing and how it was managed and where we are. Is that? Keep hands off on that or is there anything we can do to?
It's not ours.
Push.
We don't.
Belongs to the federal government, doesn't it?
She said that, that they would, they want to, and I don't know if they have, declare bankruptcy, which then gets rid of all the liens of the subcontractors, which is what stopped them.
Yeah.
And then they'll auction it off to a five oh one C three, which will take it over.
So, I'm just wondering if, uh, we could just add, be the squeaky wheel, the force, whoever's gonna run it into bankruptcy, don't put it on the desk and forget about it. Just keep it moving and get it done. Sometime it, that can be helpful.
Through your Congresswoman or?
Yeah.
Through?
Probably call Nikki.
Well, it, it's a, isn't it?
It's through the state.
But I thought there was a.
It's a HUD, HUD money.
It's HUD money. But I thought there was a five oh one C three that put it again, that's what go, that's what's going bankrupt. I thought there was a five oh one C three corporation that is now bankrupt or?
Which was Berlin, I don't even know what the name, Northbrook Two.
Yeah, some, yes.
Well, I'm just wondering if, I mean, given the, this.
Why don't you have a chat with Eloise? She's the one who knows a lot about it. Eloise is the one who, uh.
I give, somewhat, yeah.
Well, ask her who, there's a lawyer on it.
Let me know sometime and I'll come by and I'll try to do translation for you if you like this.
Well.
No, I, I really didn't spend the time.
Yeah.
But she's pretty frustrated about all the things.
Yeah, of course she is.
Really frustrated.
Alrighty.
Put her heart and soul in it.
Cavellas sent us an email and I thought this was perfect for you, Walter.
I thought so too.
Did you, did you see this email?
You know, I did. They want to get, it, it said something about a sportsman's destination or something.
Yeah.
Vintage photographs of people in the area.
Just what Walter wants to do.
Hunting, fishing, hiking, camping. You can give them the pictures of all those animals that are up on the wall.
Walter's not like really enthusiastic about advertising as a destination.
I mean, the thing I don't wanna do is to
Sanction what this.
What we're doing right now, if you know, you look at Berlin, the land we protected and the quality of life we have here, while all surrounding towns, I've worked, tried to get the Clinton Sportsman's Group, the Northbrook Sportsman's Group to protect big land. You can't even get them off the dime. Now they're crowding into Berlin hunting all the time during hunting season. We're gonna end up with people closing their land and everything, you know, and it.
We're gonna have regiments out there.
So, in other words, I'm not for, uh, they, they come in, they come in, but I'm, I'm not gonna say, hey, come on.
No, do, do, do any more and it'll look like a reenactment of Denberg.
So, that means you're not gonna, you're not gonna give them any vintage photographs?
I will. I'll, I'll look into it a little bit. I'll, uh, I saw it and I was thinking about it a little bit today, so. In fact, I sent a copy over to Fishing Wildlife, see if they could give us information on fishing in the Watchus Reservoir and Gates Pond or something.
The only thing I could contribute was a picture of the piles of deer scat in my garden.
I could picture.
How about your bushes that don't exist anymore?
Yeah, yeah.
How about a picture of all the raccoons under my bird feeder?
Yeah, it would work.
Yeah.
There you go.
Hey, do you have that picture? Let's put it up out here.
I do. I have like four raccoons underneath my bird feeder.
Oh, bring it, bring it in. Bring it in, we'll put it up. I've gotta organize that a little better.
You know, there's been a dead animal, uh, right by the railroad tracks on sixty-two, out by Five Corners for two days now. Actually, now it's pretty flat.
It's a cat?
I think it was a raccoon or a possum or something.
I'm surprised the carrion.
Didn't pick it, well, it's pretty busy where it is. People are.
No, they, they will sneak in and pull it off and, yeah.
Coyotes, yeah.
I had a, I had a, a big skunk that was hit in front of my house on a Saturday night. I, so I just took it over. It was before we had cut all that sumac and everything across the street from me. So, I just, you know, chucked it into the bushes at the bottom of the, the stone wall there and
It was gone.
Within like twenty minutes.
Right.
Yeah, they're there.
Oh, they're incredible, yeah.
Yeah, they, they, they could tell.
We have a notice to the Municipal Animal Inspector of Possible Exposure to Rabies. A cat.
Versus unknown animal.
Has a wound of unknown origin. This is down on Brigham Road.
Okay.
Uh, we have the snow and salt and we're at negative fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Sure, that hasn't changed since last week.
Uh, he had ordered supplies.
Oh, okay. All right, gotcha. Yes, I was thinking.
No, no, no.
I'm just taking a long nap or something because it's.
Uh, let's see. I mean, Massachusetts Municipal Lawyer Association, protecting the public owner when drafting design and construction contracts. MECC, uh, I don't know, what's MECC? Massachusetts, something. Transportation nightmares. Uh, it's the four ninety-five Metro West Partnership, April twenty fifteen update.
Okay.
Interrupting just the eight o'clock verk, open and continue or?
Okay. So, uh, do I hear a motion to open and continue the verk fear alcohol?
I move to, uh, open and continue to?
Monday, April twenty.
Monday, April at?
Eight PM.
Eight PM, okay.
So, here is second.
You hear a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, from the town clerk, um, subject mass housing Berlin Woods. I've added the building inspector and selectmen to this email, cause I cannot answer your questions. This is Eloise. This is from Comprehensive Permit Programs, the Mass Housing Finance Agency about Berlin Woods, to whom it may concern if this is not the appropriate office, which please direct, blah, blah. How many units have been built and sold to date of those units, which are market rate and which are affordable? Is the construction complete? If so, what is the completion date? If not, what is the estimated completion date?
I, I forward that to Mark Rhodes and I think that he'd respond
Okay.
quickly.
Then Larry should kinda know.
Right, because the comprehensive permit, we have all that stuff in it.
We have something from the retired.
Not all of it, not what's been built, but the numbers and so on, yeah.
The Retired State County Municipal Employee Association of Massachusetts, if anyone would like to read it.
No, thanks.
We have a regional district survey that you should be taking. You can either do it online or there are paper copies. There's one right here.
Uh, the webmaster is gonna put it up on the town's website.
Okay.
I think there's one for the regional school and there's also a survey for regional HR.
That's the yellow one. The yellow one's in-house for town employees. The blue one, uh, Janet Pierce stopped by today. She said she had had two hundred responses to the school survey so far.
Oh, good.
And on the HR one, she's had eighty responses. She thinks that's largely school employees.
We don't have.
School employees.
Yeah, we made with, we made with school and region, right?
Yeah, it's both towns and the school.
Oh, oh, it's both towns too, okay.
And the school, yeah. It's each individual employee.
But that's, that's still, that's a sizable, um,
Yeah.
response.
We have the Finance Committee Report on their warrant articles and the source of funding. So, it has all the votes and where they're gonna get the money from.
I agree.
Just a.
F cam, flags, half-staff, Tuesday, April twenty fourteen.
That's an order of the governor, so we don't have to take any action.
Yep. And Scott Hawkins, the budget reserve fund spending list. It's all the stuff that's gonna go in the town report.
Okay.
And we already did Diane Peterson.
All right.
Is there anything else?
Uh, just, I don't know when or where or how or what, but Diane brought the idea of having technology by committee. There's just a lot of different people have different ideas on technology and I don't know if it's ever solicited. I haven't gone through a full budget cycle yet, but I haven't seen that.
I, I think we, again, I think we should have a meeting.
Bring everybody in.
Bring.
But for this office, we are in dire need of scanning. I'm trying to get something to you and I am doing it one page at a time and it's beyond infuriating. The, the copier in there has the capability to do it, so I'm gonna ask Diane DePlanch to look into it.
Okay, that'd be good.
Find out if, if there's an expense associated with it.
Okay.
Um, we're, um, we talked about it last time. Did we resolve how would we go about getting collections for the emergency service, for the rescue squad?
No, Joel has not answered that.
Why can't we just, um, I mean,
Sorry, what was that?
The world won't come to an end if we.
Rescue and having Goodie's wife do, um, collections for the rescue squad. They have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in outstanding decade-old, in some cases, ambulance ride bills that have not been paid for.
There's a, oh, there's a lot of money out uncollected and, um, other towns have collection people doing it and, uh, you know, what great harm would there be if we just gave forty cases to, to Dave Goulden's wife to try out? She does a low intensity collection thing on any high powered.
Because it would seem to possibly give it a leg to one vendor over any others. What does you getting forty done prove? Other than she got twenty of forty done.
Well, could you give, um,
Yep.
What's his name on the call and just tell him what she was about this?
It's telling that we need an answer by Friday.
Right.
That, that we, it's time sensitive and we need an answer by Friday.
Okay, that's the time sensitive thing that's working.
Time sensitive seems to work.
Yeah, cause we don't wanna talk about it anymore.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, will do.
I was pleased that, um, they thought the pilot, sport of the pilot stuff was good.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, nothing more from me.
I, um, this morning got a call because there's a bulldozer at Maplewood and so I went up. And basically, anything being done up there at this point is per order of DEP. They were maintaining and making sure the settling basin wasn't gonna let go. It almost overflowed with the last rainstorm. So, they're sort of, um, mucking it out a little bit, so there's more storage area. And what they were doing was on the area that is filled in and has to do with the settling basins, which tomorrow claimed is per order of DEP, that they have to maintain that.
As I remember it, the restraining order had an exception for doing the work that was required by either the order of conditions or the DEP modification of the order of conditions. So, they, they are within their
Yeah.
rights under the restraining order to do something with regard to that.
And what is Dan there looking at it? It was totally related to the settling basin. It was nothing else.
And I'll take, I'll take a look when I'm up there, cause I'm gonna be up there on Friday with, um, the, the attorneys.
The other thing is going into the driveway. I had to put it in four-wheel drive to go downhill into the driveway and it's really mucky and they can't trench, because then it would require an order of conditions and, and stormwater runoff and everything else.
Past the barn or the driveway?
It's the main driveway going in even before you get to the.
Even before you get to the.
Yeah, so it's pretty soupy. So, they're gonna haul in stone on Wednesday or Thursday to put a base down, so they can drive in and out, cause they can't.
No, no, I think that's fine.
They can't trench it there.
We'll get a call about that.
We will, yeah.
Be ready. You can forward that one to Walter.
I don't mind going up, I mean.
Now, they, they, it, they are likely to get a modest load of stone to stabilize the road of the way in, because
Yes.
Something was coming in, we'll, we'll, uh, no doubt get a call. But again, that's not, we're not talking a high volume of stuff.
No, no, no. Yeah, ten-wheel load at most, cause it's, it's a hundred feet long and it's really, you drive through it like this, it's just full of, full of, it's pretty soupy.
Okay.
So, they need to solidify.
And it's just stone?
Yep, just stone.
Um, I did send the, uh, earthworks application to Worcester Sand and Gravel just
Okay.
this afternoon.
Good. And they may be bringing that stuff in to stabilize the slug, but we still need to know where it comes from.
It is, it is, he said.
Okay, yeah, well, finally he's getting around to it.
To who now?
Worcester Sand and Gravel.
Oh, okay.
Well, if he brings it, and he still has to go through the.
I just said that, yep.
The permit.
Yep.
Oh, permitting.
It's good that he's getting around to that and stabilizing the slug, but he still has to.
Five, six years.
Oh, it's gotta be at least that, yeah.
All right, anything else?
Nope.
Go on, all right, do I hear a motion?
Well, we'll make the motion, since you seem to be incapacitated.
Yeah.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.